Are you good?
I'll take a check in to make sure that last time he wasn't.
We're in line. All right. Wait for my close up.
Showing the last part of the finance board meeting. There was still the finance board. Three eighteen county council meeting.
Is it? It's probably everybody good?
Did you see it?
Yep.
Five o'clock. My cause me, Doris, stands for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the March eighteenth twenty twenty-five county council meeting. First piece of business up is the minutes from last meeting. And everybody had an email out or sent them, so we'll look for a motion to approve those or a motion with additions or corrections if anybody sees anything that they don't agree with.
Make motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, Justice Gross has made a motion. We approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Grohlik seconds. Any other discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes approved. Thank you, Melissa. All right, guys, next up here, we've got some additionals that have been advertised. So some of these were talked about last month. We just got to approve them. Get the stuff in the works here. All right, the first one up here is the, from the county general, the sheriff, the, for overtime where she got the money back from the school corporation for thirty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. So we'll look for a motion to approve that or the sheriff's here if anybody's got questions.
Make motion to approve.
Steve Hoff makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave Fromelee seconds. Any further discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll oppose it. I'm gonna wait till, till we use the twenty thousand up maybe first before we throw them on thirty on top, but I don't like to do it this way. But I mean, I'm not against your overtime if you need it, but who knows when I don't need it.
All right. Everybody in favor of Dave. Motion carries. All right, the next thing up here, Brian was here last month to talk about this, that Soil and Water got their audit and need to pay their audit bill for thirty-seven nineteen. So looking for a motion to approve three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and can't get over Soil and Water to pay their audit bill.
I make the motion to approve the thirty-seven nineteen.
All right, Brian Grohlik made a motion. Do I have a second? Susan Harris seconds. Any further discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then moving down the list here, we got the health board. We need to get the FICA and the PERF for their part of the new position appropriated here. So twenty-two ninety-five, forty-two sixty-one, for a total of sixty-five fifty-six out of eleven fifty-nine health account. So it's been advertised. Look for a motion to approve that request. Steve makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave Fromelee makes the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Important to note that these things were already discussed the last meeting.
Right.
We applied through these things, but they've already been discussed.
Okay, guys, if you look at this sheet right here that we got, it's toward the front of your book. It's Gina and Dale are at the road school. And last month we had some questions about their conferences, so we did move forward with those. So if you look at, when everybody gets there, let me know. It's this sheet here's got the red, I don't know, might have told it front. Okay, Melissa, go make some copies real quick.
Down this way.
There you go, I got copies of it.
All right. All right, so this is the one hour east of the old two thirty-one project. Commissioners have entered into a contract for phase one and two. You all can see the amounts here, two point four million, just call it three million for phase two. Phase one is from old Lincoln Truck Stop, Highway sixty-two to one thousand north as when you head south. Then the second phase is from one thousand north to five hundred north. And there is, there is a third phase, which is from five hundred north to three fifty north, but we haven't entered in that, but they might now have got the community crossroad grant approved. So we, the way this is, I talked to Gina and Dale for a long time about this. This is kind of one of those deals that we pay upfront and then they give us, the state will give us our money back. So it's an eighty-twenty split, so we're out twenty percent, the state pays eighty percent. But on the current two contracts right now, this preliminary engineering, we already owe the money for that, so four hundred ninety-one thousand for the first phase, and five hundred ninety-seven thousand. So that's why Gina was encumbering that money, because we have to have enough money available to pay these two contracts and then get our money back as they get the project completed. So basically what they, the way she explained it to me was, and Gina, if I'm wrong in this, correct me, that they'll send us a bill as we pay it and then thirty to sixty days later, the state sends us the bill back, eighty percent of it, so we're not, at one time gonna be out all this money, but we, as the cycle goes, we're gonna use a lot of this. So they wanna make sure they got enough money left, but when we get the bill, we only have thirty days to pay it. So that's why they're asking for the money that wasn't covered, which is now gonna be, you know, additional. So because we didn't do any coverings last month. So that's, that's why we have a request and Melissa did advertise it, because Gina brought it down here right after. And so it has been advertised, the request is for one million four hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars for lit for the paving project to redo, repay vote two thirty-one. Any questions for myself or Gina? And Gina and Dale could be at their road school, that's why they're not here tonight and West Lafayette. All right, hearing no questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request out of lit eleven twenty, eleven twelve.
I make the motion there.
Steve Hoff makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Grohlik seconds. Any further discussion here? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next thing here is with the, with the encumbrance for a hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars. This is for Bridge Fund and moving forward here at budget time, we probably budget this a little bit different, but they, the remaining balance for that, for the four-year contract is a hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixteen cents. So that is why Gina has asked for that amount there of four hundred, a hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, because, and she said they're currently negotiating on the new four-year contract now. So, but this is what we, this is the remaining payment of what we owe on the old contract that ran from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. So we'll need a, a motion to approve that, so to get the money in there. But we're currently, we basically sent invoice last month for thirty-five thousand, so we get that in there, we'll be able to get them paid for the United Bridge work for the, for the bridge contract. Any questions? All right, hearing none, look for a motion to approve the Q Bridge, eleven thirty-five, a hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars. Got a motion to approve that.
That's an eighty-twenty also, right?
Eventually we give you that money, but eighty twenty back, yes, Dave?
We owe it, we'll pay it. I make motion to approve.
All right, Steve Hoff makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Justin Gross seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
And that's a federal.
Right.
That comes from the feds.
So yeah, it's eighty twenty, so we'll get, we'll get eighty percent back eventually. All right, the next thing here, guys, this is, I think Dave wants to say something about this maybe, but...
I don't, you know, this is supposedly what was left over in her twenty twenty-four budget, which is fine. If you got that leftover in the budget, it rolls back into the fund that it came out of and you start the new year with a new budget. You know, like office cleaning, she wants to transfer her, encumber three hundred and seventy-nine dollars out of the twenty-four budget when you start the twenty-five budget with six thousand four hundred dollars in it. Why are we doing that? That makes no sense at all to me. You start in January and you use this new budget. Why are you taking last year's money and wanna transfer it over? So you have more money to spend, I guess, but you run out of money, you come back in here and ask for it again.
What are you talking about?
Like, okay, office cleaning, she wants to encumber three hundred and seventy-nine dollars from her twenty twenty-four budget, encumber it, so she can spend it this year. The new budget, twenty-five budget, it starts out at sixty-four hundred dollars in it. Why don't you use that first? And if you run out, then you do an additional at the end of the year, but why are you encumbering all these little...
Well, now they're asking, they're asking for additional now at the beginning. You know, because these aren't encumbrances, now they're advertising for additional.
We turned down encumbrances, now they're doing additional. Why are you, why are you doing additional when you got sixty-four hundred dollars in there?
My thought on that would be you take what you're gonna give and what you encumber, that's what you stick in the budget for next year.
I mean, there's, she kinda want, this may be, this twenty-five budget may be all she needs this year. Nobody knows.
Question is, is why are you encumbering? Why wasn't it spent? Well, that's, as far as your, as far as the stuff like the, like what you all just approved, that was for, you were supposed to pay that last year and it didn't get there.
Yeah, but these things are different, these are different.
That's why you did that, but the other stuff, as far as your, I guess your...
You just run your budget out of there, that are, that we do over every year and every year.
I can't, I can't answer that. You'll have to talk to...
Well, they get, spend it should just roll back into the fund, to the fund, not into the, not into the thing, you know. Okay.
Well, I mean, everybody's got a budget at the end of the year. If there's money left in the budget, it should, it just rolls back in the fund that it's appropriated out to begin with. That's how this is supposed to work and then you got a new budget starting on next year. You know, this is just kind of a way of saving the money, I guess, but the money ain't lost. We went back in the fund and get, you know, re-appropriated if needed.
There's plenty, there's plenty of money in every one of these to start the year off. You don't really have to do additional now, because we could really do these and then just have to do another one in a year.
It's kinda like what I said with the sheriff's department, there's money in these line items. If you want five hundred and forty dollars additional for uniforms, you start the year out with fourteen thousand, why are we, why are we doing that? There's probably thirteen in there now yet.
So I mean, we, if we, if we did these now, we could actually end up doing two additional for this fund. I think Dave's right, in my opinion, we probably should just deny all these. And then in November, if they need additional, October, we'll just do an additional of that. There's no need to do one now and then if they still run short on money, do another one, might just do one per...
She probably not gonna run short, but she had some left last year and I'm sure this year's budget is probably the same and not more, so... It, it, it's just foolishness, I think.
Yeah, if there's no outstanding bills against any of these items.
That's why you encumbered, won't even add outstanding bill.
It's finished.
Well, either there's...
And it is finished and it goes back into the fund. That's the way all are.
That's the way everybody's supposed to be.
When we got two hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, dollars, you know what I mean?
I mean, all of them, like gas, fuel and oil, once encumbered twenty-two thousand, it starts the year out with a quarter million dollars. And what's to add to that now? I'm gonna go, no, you guys do.
That just feels like we overbudgeted last year.
Well, they've got stuff that they bought in here, but it doesn't really matter when it got paid, because there's plenty of money in this year's budget. We didn't use the whole budget last year. I mean, it's, it does, I don't know that we really wanna start doing additional, in margin, we don't really know where we're gonna end up in the year.
Yeah, that's another thing, yeah.
So, all right, guys, we need one to the end, but, you know, we got plenty of money. These are the two in here, team bridge and the paving, yeah, we had to have that, we got these big contracts. This we don't, I mean, we're just operating very good businesses.
The biggest one, you know, is the gas fuel and all, they have no, no outstanding bills against that?
Well, if they do, there's two hundred and fifty thousand, it starts a budget off, in a year, you use that money to pay it.
And then if we need additional money in November, we'll just, we'll just do it then. Because that way we're not doing additional and doing another additional. And I mean, that's a big guess on what the fuel price will be this year, you know, we're kinda guessing on that. But I mean, there's no need to do an additional now and then do another additional in December or November. All right, what do you, what's the council choose to do?
So you only need to adjust it and die or lack of motion, right?
Right, I call, yeah. All right.
It's basically trying to spend more money than we budgeted for twenty twenty-five, that's what we're trying to do here.
Well, that, that still, I'm confused. If they, if they didn't spend it, then it goes back into the fund.
Right.
They spent it, so we need to pay the bills.
Yeah.
Well, if they, if they did, even if they did spend the money, it's fine, because we have plenty of money budgeted this year and they didn't use all the money from last year.
I mean, sometimes they have a little more than they needed, but that's fine. You know, if you got money left over, that's great. I mean, we didn't spend everything and we, that we budgeted.
They got money in, they got fair bills, that's what we're getting at.
But it forces them to come back for sure and ask for additional.
If they need it.
Well, maybe, we don't know for sure. They had money left last year and it's the way we, we had money left this year.
But you're telling me that they spent this money?
No, 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 what money?
We're not...
The twenty-two thousand seven hundred...
No, they did spend it, we're not saying...
Okay, if they didn't spend it, then that means they didn't need it.
Yeah.
And they're back in the fund.
Right, right.
But if they spent it, then I'm for approval.
Well, if you look right here, we're spending about, our synergy bill's about, is twenty-two thousand dollars a month. Dave, what's twenty-two times twelve? Can you get it in your head?
Two twenty and another forty-four, two sixty-four.
Two sixty-four, so I mean, there's two hundred, so we got two hundred and seventy-five thousand in there, so we've got enough money in there anyway. Because if you look, we paid, well, we paid November and January, notice I don't miss about what I...
All right, we allow this, we could have everybody coming in here at the end of the year with money left in the budget, wanting to encumber it. They're not supposed to encumber.
He, he's worried that there's an outstanding bill out there that ain't paid.
That's right.
That's what he's saying.
Why would there be an outstanding bill? They had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars starting in January, wanted to pay the bill.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I'm trying to explain this.
They pay the bills.
Then it, then it forces them to come back and ask for additional.
If they need it, but we don't know what the future holds.
Yeah. I don't see, there's, these things here should, they're pretty off from two nineteen, there's no, there's no outstanding amount. They're all, they've all been paid, they're all paid.
Correct. Or outstanding amount and then the money goes back into the fund.
Yeah.
And when we denied the encumbrances, it went back into the fund.
Right.
Now they wanna do an additional of the encumbrances that we denied.
Yeah, we don't.
That's what I'm saying, if they didn't spend it, then it goes back into the...
If you look through these things or she print them off, there's no outstanding amounts, we're good. All right, I'll, I'll call for motion. If we don't wanna move forward, just, no, just, no, we'll just wanna make a motion, I'll die for, lack of motions. All right, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the twenty-six thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars out of eleven seventy-six highway. Anybody wanna make that motion? All right, I'll call again for that, does anybody wanna make a motion to, for the twenty-six thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars out of highway eleven seventy-six? All right, hearing none, dead, nobody made a motion, so we'll, we'll not approve those due to lack of motion. And, yeah, they can easily come back here for those. All right, guys, we're up to transfers here. Just got a couple here, real quick. We, Spencer County Prosecutor, we've got increase of office equipment, increase of office supplies. So their purchase of colored printer for user business machines. Just need to get it in from supplies to equipment to the right line. Twelve hundred seventy-two dollars twenty-six cents. Do I have a motion to approve that request? All right, I'll second. Dave Fromelee seconds, Justin Gro, or Dave Fromelee makes a motion, Justin Gross seconds. Any further discussion, board? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, we're transferring.
Next paper flip back.
Hope we get there, Justin.
Oh, I got multiple copies here.
All right, you ready, guys? All right, the next up here, we've got a request in for, from the Spencer County Circuit Court to increase drug testing supplies, increase the outrage and participant treating things for a total of thirty-one fifty-seven thirty. Thirteen fifty-seven thirty, sorry, we're giving glasses, I guess. Do you have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Brian Grohlik makes that motion. Do I have a second? Susan Harris seconds. Any discussion, board? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Let's go through our transfers. The, the next thing up here, guys, is our annual appropriation. We just appropriate this money so that when people need that, they can spend it without having to, to come ask the court every year. It's something we do every year about, every year about this time, you know. Along with the sheriff's department pre-trial diversion, cost of the elected officials, auditors and thing, sheriff sales, health clinics, EMA, public safety, safe haven box. So there's, there's a list of them, those have been advertised. We just need to appropriate those, so if somebody needs those funds to operate out, that they have those to operate their business as they see need or their board season needed, so if I can get a motion to approve that, we'll, we'll get those funds, money appropriated and if we need them throughout the year, we'll have it to operate with. All right, looking for a motion to approve the annual additional appropriations as provided on the list here.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Dave Fromelee makes a motion. Do I have a second? I'll make a second. All right, Justin Gross makes a second. All right, looks like everybody's approving, anybody got one, one other minute to review or got questions? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, got it. All right, next up, the sheriff is here. She wants to talk to us about appropriating sixty-three fifty from the sheriff's drug investigation fund for the general fund, it's some drug seizure money. Sheriff?
This is money that we got, the total amount that the county received from a drug seizure was eleven thousand two hundred and five dollars. By state statutes, certain amounts have to go certain places. And so the amount of money that came back to the sheriff's office was the six thousand three forty-nine fifty. It was put in general fund in, I believe, twenty-three, right after I came in and it's just a matter of getting the fund lined out and getting appropriate. So we'll be using it for any kind of equipment in support of combating drugs in the county.
Okay, all right, guys, it's not advertised, we just have to make a motion to advertise this at next month and for next month's meeting, then we can appropriate it if we so choose at next month's meeting.
We advertise the sixty-three forty-nine fifty to go with the sheriff's drug investigation.
All right, Dave Goodeley made a motion. We advertise this request. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Steve Hoff seconds. Any discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, we get that advertised, Sheriff, get it done. All right, next up, Mindy here at the health department and she's got a bill from Lockmueller and it's our estimate, it's, I don't know which one we really, I mean, we got an invoice here, but is this, is this our final invoice or do you think...
No, I requested the final invoice. This amount here, I will fall short. There was an extra bill of eight thousand some dollars and then I owe seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars all from the previous bill, because I didn't, I definitely threw that thirty thousand dollars that was put in there. So I was thinking, well, I'd ask for another thirty, but since that has happened, that leaves me, if you approve this thirty thousand, that would leave me with fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six fifty. My guess, and it would be that the next bill coming in, they're hitting it about twenty-three thousand or twenty-eight days. So I'm thinking, I don't know, I mean, I'm thinking forty-five, fifty thousand maybe what would need to be...
Advertised.
In there to hopefully take care of what's coming in.
Okay. All right, guys, we gotta advertise this and we just, we really, when we started this, the commissioner, we really didn't know where we, what we were after and where we're at, so anyways, we can advertise, it's coming out of eleven fifty-nine health fund, not the county general fund. There's plenty of money in there, we could advertise fifty thousand, the council thought that was appropriate. If it does, if she doesn't use it, it's gonna roll right back into her own fund. That way she doesn't have to come back and ask for more money. That's just my suggestion, it's up to you all. We would need a motion to advertise fifty thousand out of the eleven fifty-nine for contractual services for Lockmueller.
Just for clarification, I know we use them kind of in the interim of the new person we hired, right? We're not still utilizing our...
We're not using Lockmueller.
Okay.
The reason we use them is because we had dissolved a position, I guess, so then we had to find someone to step up.
And they're, and the new one, the new general... Yeah, all right.
Do you have any specific systems Lockmueller did for us?
I have yet to know of one that has been completed, but I believe that we have, which includes about forty-five down there in the box that have been active throughout, because I was helping, you know, on that too.
Here they are.
So I was doing about twenty-five forty-nine in that box down there. A lot of them are ready for the systems to be installed, I think they're just waiting on the weather to get, yeah. So, yeah, they'll be busy once they start and whether it's going to be in this field.
Okay, guys, I'll, I'll look for someone in the third, if the council still wishes to make a motion to advertise fifty thousand for contractual services to pay the Lockmueller group out of eleven fifty-nine account. Make motion to advertise fifty thousand out of eleven fifty-nine to pay the contractual services for Lockmueller. All right, Justin Gross has made the motion. Do I have a second? All right, Steve Hoff seconds. All right, any further discussion? Question for me? Okay, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I have one other thing, I don't know if you wanna address it now or not. Did you get a copy of, on this letter?
It's in the back of the book, guys.
Okay. Do you wanna wait for me to read it?
Hold on, I saw it. No, we can, we can do it while you're here, that's fine. I had it in our new business, but we'll do it right now, you're here, that's fine, we'll do it. All right, guys, the, the next thing that's in here from Mindy is, and I don't know if it's been approved by the commissioners yet or not, but is to add some part-time help for three weeks to help the new food sanitary inspection, Tammy Green get trained, so they're asking for, for a request for twenty-one hundred dollars and this can come out of the HFI contractual partners line, not the county general money. So questions from Mindy or...
Yeah, I'd like to explain a little bit how I figured that. I had first thought about, you know, eleven fifty-nine, but then, you know, that would have to be under part-time seasonal or part-time help or whatever, then you have to go in and fight it and all that stuff. So when I looked at the HFI and I have a, a count line in there that is for contractual partners, so I emailed Michelle Hatter in the state and I asked her if they can, you know, we utilize that contractual partners and as, you know, I stated there in the letter to answer to that was yes, that we can, because the food protection is part of the regulatory core service deliveries. So the money's already there, it's just a matter of getting approval at the hourly rate approximately three weeks. She would sign the contract that Andrew had drew up that leaves with all of our partners and then I would attach an appendix B to that that would outline that this is just temporary for training, you know, for the three-week period and, you know, and line out, you know, the what's allowed and what's not. And the reason behind doing this is because Tammy's just started, she's getting some, signing up for some training and everything and just contacting...
And, um, the reason behind doing this is because Tammy's just started, she's getting some, uh, signing up for some training and everything, and just contacted the state person, but here in the middle of April, we've got holiday world that she's going to have to go inspect, you've got like thirty-five plus food and beverage stands and, you know, restaurants and all that, and so you're kind of like throwing her into an area, so we thought, you know, Angie offered, you know, so that, you know, if we could, that she'd help and stuff, but we just didn't think that that was fair for her to have to spend, um, because I think before they estimated that doing holiday world takes within a two-week period to go up there, by the time you get all those done, so it wasn't fair to ask her to volunteer her time, even though she's gracious enough to do so, to go up there and spend hours and hours helping train Tammy, and as not, you know, kind of help her out from her work effort.
All right, guys, y'all have heard Mindy's explanation, um, so, we, uh.
But she's not asking for additional money, she's just asking to appropriate the money she has. Can I make a motion to do that?
Yep, all right, we got, just. Steve's made a motion, that we, uh, will, uh, we have to advertise that, I guess, Melissa.
Yeah.
Brian? From the health, do we have the advertising out of the health, Angus, Health, uh, HF five?
I think so, haven't, haven't we done prior?
Have we done one of those before, out of Big Jet Lock?
No, we haven't done anything like that.
Your partner said we asked.
It's not, it's not a budgeted line item, it's a grant, isn't it, from?
Yeah.
Yes. We just got to appropriate.
This falls under the contractual, I do, I do know that I will have to post that for thirty days, so I'll post it outside our office on our bulletin board, because of being contractual.
We've been advertising those.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we just need to make them, we'll advertise it, and we'll appro, appro, we'll approve it the next meeting, that's what I think we need to do.
I'll second.
All right, uh, who made the motion, Steve?
Steve.
Steve Hall made a motion, Brian Grohl made a motion to advertise this, uh, for our next meeting, any other questions? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mindy, got you, thank you. All right, uh, next up, uh, EMA Stephanie Melton, don't, uh, I don't see if she's here, uh, oh, there she is, we're not going to back, she's hiding, I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, I snuck in.
You snuck in, congratulations, all right, sprinting.
Okay, well, a couple of things before I get to the, the vote request here, um, just FYI, so I just got notification, we got approved, um, it's called a performance salary grant, so the county is getting twenty-one thousand nine hundred and two dollars and twenty-three cents, um, to, we just, it just goes back to the general fund, it's just for, for Mark and I's salary, um, I don't know where it goes after it goes to general fund, but you guys get that, so I just did the paperwork, and you guys get it, so. Also, um, just let you know to AEP, just renewed our co-red, um, update for the county, so that was two to two of sixteen thousand one hundred eighty-three forty-four.
Good sentiment, thank you.
AEP, yes, a very good partner for the, for the county, so that's our mass notification system. Um, the other thing, I just got notification, uh, is our mitigation plan update, so this plan is required, um, for us to be eligible for disaster relief funding, um, and then if the county, if any jurisdiction has any mitigation projects, then this makes them eligible, if they don't participate, they do not get any kind of grant funding, so, and this is a requirement, we got, um, they just sent me the notification that they gave us, I didn't do any paperwork, but we knew it was coming, um, but twenty-four thousand three hundred and four dollars, so we have to meet a match on this, but it's considered a soft match, so all the meetings that we have throughout the county, so, um, everyone's time is worth so much per hour, and also the mileage, um, to get back and forth to meetings, and so I haven't sent any letters out, um, for this yet, we're still working on some paperwork, um, but that is, um, in the works for this too, so I guess, um, I guess I need approval on this for you guys too, I know you, you two have been through this before, so.
Can we try to get the incorporated town to participate more than they have?
Well, they, we can try that, and we try to make the, the meetings go from north to south, so no one has to drive, you know, so much each time, so, um, we can try that, a lot of this, there'll be some surveys sent out, that all, you know, counts as time as well, and so I just got a spreadsheet, um, and we'll keep track of it.
I mean, we'll get enough hours.
We generally do, um, so our match for this, the soft match, is eight thousand one hundred twenty-eight sixty, um, we generally, you know, meet that match, so, but it's a requirement for us to, for us to have, so, um, but I'll be getting letters and stuff out for that as well, so.
I mean, not, not just to make our match, just to get involved, I think.
Right, right.
All right, we need a motion to, uh, to.
Give a permission to.
To permission to, uh, uh, apply for the, uh, the grant for the, uh.
Mitigation.
Mitigation plan, you want to call it a mitigation grant? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we give EMA permission to.
All right.
Apply for it.
Dave Doggman made a motion, do I have a second?
Not a second.
All right, Brian Grohl, seconds. Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Every five years directly.
Yeah, I, I was, I was on the last one, it takes a lot of stuff, really.
It takes a lot of, it takes, just, just, just over a year it takes to get everything done, so it's, it's a process.
All right, yeah, all right, we got that.
And one more little thing again, so just, I guess, if I need, um, approval to move with this, we have a program that our search and rescue has team, a team has done in the past called Project Lifesaver, so this is for folks who may have autism, Alzheimer's, um, people who wander off, and they're under a caregiver, so it becomes stressful for them, um, it's a transmitter, we have some equipment that we can quickly, um, locate them, um, our equipment is now out, and we've been doing this for, you know, fifteen years, we haven't really had any takers, I did have a call last week, um, for someone who has a four-year-old, um, who's starting to, to take off, so, um, the equipment is about two thousand dollars, I'm just wanting, um, approval, I'm going to try to get some smaller outside grants to cover this equipment, um, and I just need approval for that.
All right, uh, Stephanie wants a, uh, a request to approve for a, uh, two thousand dollars for a, some, a tracking.
Project Lifesaver.
Project, what do you call it?
Project Lifesaver.
Project Lifesaver, thank you.
I did hear there's a house bill, I was talking to the, uh, Tulsa Police Chief, and he said, there's, because there are project lifesaver counties as well, and he said that he, there is a house bill out that's going to make this a requirement for each county, um, it's, we don't know where it's at in that process, though, but.
All right, guys, uh, the request is for a, uh, apply for a grant for two thousand dollars for, uh, Project Lifesaver.
Now, if they're going to make a requirement for every county, does that mean they're going to pay some of the bill?
Um, the, the equipment is not really bad, it just costs about two thousand dollars for us to get that big equipment, so.
I'm just saying, if there's.
Most of the time we get something, it's one of them unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates, so, I'm not really thinking that, but, you know, I don't know.
I'll make a motion, without ever proceeding with looking into the grant.
All right, Justin made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Susan Harris seconds. All right, any others questions, or discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, all right.
Okay, and then the, the final thing is for the boat, um, I know you all, you've been here any amount of time, know we have an old boat for the river, um, every time we get one thing fixed, something else goes wrong or that, it becomes an issue, and we go somewhere, and we try to keep working out to get the stupid thing to run, so, um, it's not really safe for responders at this point, and we really need something good that's going to, it's going to work for us if we're going to respond to anything, especially on the river, um, so that's, I had done a grant for this last year, I was not awarded that grant, and then I went to DNR, they said EMA is not a qualifying entity to get surplus equipment from them, so now I'm coming to you guys, I don't know what grants are going to be available, you know, for this year, I have no idea, I don't know that, so, I'm just asking you guys.
No, uh, no objections to needing a boat, but we have to have three quotes on anything over, what's it, fifty?
Over fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. Yeah, and I do have, um, some quotes I have for the grant, so I had, uh, the N bar that I gave you guys, that was the sixty-nine one thousand, or sixty-nine thousand one hundred eighteen seventy-five, there's also a different kind of setup that I looked at, but it's not ideal for us either, because it's still a John boat on the river, it's called a water rescue package, so, um, I have a picture of that, if you want to see that, it's got a John boat and, um, a raft, um, on top of that, and I do have a quote for that, that's right just above sixty-nine thousand as well, and then I also did another quote, um, for almost the exact same boat as the one I showed you, and it was a hundred and five thousand, like, just a different company, so here's a few, I didn't make the confidence, but there's the other boat I'm talking about on the bottom there, um, and then this other one, um, and it's, like, you all had the picture of the first one, so here's this other one that's a hundred and five, and it's the same thing, so I don't know what the difference is.
Is this like a aluminum hull boat?
Yes, it's a, it's a rigid hull.
Always two thousand pounds.
Oh, twelve feet. It's a rigid hull, but also inflatable?
On the top, yes, on the top.
The top. So it's kind of specialized?
Yes, the V hull is good for the river, it's just a smoother ride, a safer ride on the river.
This, this quote is from last year.
I, I did call him, and I asked if it was still good, and he said yes, and I said, if approved, what, you know, I'm thinking several months to get it, he said, oh, two weeks, he said, if there's a problem, maybe four weeks.
This, this one here, what's that one?
The bottom one, that's also sixty-nine, just over sixty-nine thousand. And it's no.
As I was saying, we're talking less than one-fourth of the water on E.
Yeah.
And will this be staying up at EMA with headquarters?
Yeah. And I've got, Jimmy Parkin, he's also on the water rescue team, so we have, what, about six, seven guys?
We got seven on Christine.
On Christine Fire, that's on water rescue, so they're very quick to be able to deploy, um, when needed.
And we've all, already been through training, uh, with EMA on the old boats, and, and that, and we'll continue to train on that way to, um, we just felt like, uh, we could help out with the response on that, like, being so close.
Fifty-two gallon fuel.
Have we ever been this, um, before?
We have not, no. The problem is, since that's more of a special one, locally, I just, well, for, making a lot of calls getting quotes, people don't get back to you, it's a thing now, but anyway, um, and we just do not want a John boat.
Right.
This is not going to, especially when you get, you know, white caps on the river, you don't want to, it's okay to go fishing and be lollygagging around, but.
Yeah, this price is current, David here is made twenty twenty-four.
Yes, he said the price. Yeah, that was for the grant, he did say the price was still good.
All right, and we have to advertise it, so we have to make a motion that, or to advertise this for next month, so, we want to move forward, this, we have to figure out where we want to take the, the money out of, um, I don't know, it's up to, it's up to you all, um.
Will you be able to use this in the backwaters and stuff, in the backwaters?
Um, we can't, there is, it's a, I can't think of the word, but.
The depth of the boat.
Low depth, yeah, um, on that boat, that'd be easier for the floodwaters as well, and we do, we do still have the John boat, um, for some of the backwater, and we also have the eight, no water rescue is the same, um, we also have the eight-by-eight, for those, when we get in times, we have, you know, some cornfield, some mud, and water, we have a mixture of that in the eight-by-eight, so, there's no one size fits all.
And it's, which township has the Hummer boat, that isn't very good on the river.
It's not, it doesn't work on the river, and if there's any debris or, um, floodwaters, um, they can get damaged pretty easily. That it has been, yeah, yeah, that works great, how many people drive off the road, um, and they can get to it pretty quickly with that.
Does the county, any other departments have any other outside of this township, is this the only other?
That's it. We don't get a lot of calls of more, stay mindful, they have a boat they have access to, and they're free to get out, um, there's only really, just a couple of places that they have issues with it there, and they take care of that.
They don't like grand, they're looking pretty hard.
Getting the boat and stuff too, just after the incident, we were here recently, they'll be one for sale shortly.
Well, Mike will just sign up for water rescue, sir.
All right, guys, do we want to make a motion to, uh, advertise it for next month, and figure out, I think, we'll figure out what we want to do for sure, we do have to advertise it, so, anybody got a suggestion?
Yeah, we've got to continue to do this, people have to be safe.
We're on the river.
It's something that's not adequate.
The, uh, the boat that's identical to this, does it have that price on the quote, a hundred and some?
Yes, I've got the, it's, yeah, I don't.
Can you, uh, can you tomorrow scan them in and email those to Melissa's a quote, so we have three quotes on our. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause our teeth.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just, because I mean, we spent, we spent fifty thousand, supposed to have three quotes for our.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
And we don't have to take the cheapest quote, we're supposed to have three quotes. Yeah. We get the best. On that one, that one's not adequate, you know.
Right, I think, that was just trying to come up with something different, so I know what we need, that the price range for all of the same type was that sixty-nine up to.
You run it by Dad?
He did, he approved it, yes.
I'm good.
With his, you know, towboat captain, post guard, all these years on the river, more visionaries, because, yeah.
He's got a lot of river experience.
Yeah. Well, when I was eleven, he thought I should learn how the river works, so I had to learn how to walk through the walls, I had to learn how the cart worked while I was moving the boat too, so.
Is there any shipping or any freight or anything on this?
The shipping is pretty bad.
Yeah, okay, there, it's already due on our, okay. How far away is it?
California.
California, I know.
Cause I don't think I can get that back in for the.
Two dollars a mile and taking six.
The closest local, uh, was in, uh, Mississippi, that's the closest.
The durability of those in flight, I don't know anything too much, I mean, does that, will that hold up?
That one's a, that will hold up, yeah, there's several different chambers in there, so if one chamber goes down, the whole holder, we can get it repaired, so.
I never heard of that word, fabric, that H Y.
That looks like all the C, what the C and stuff they do.
I mean, yeah, I, in my opinion, guys, when I advertise it, we got two options to go, but probably just put it in the, uh, in the, uh, the general fund thing, and just do the advertising additional in the, uh, one thousand four five one zero zero equipment fund, we already have an equipment fund in here, we just do the dish, advertise an additional, uh, for sixty-nine thousand one hundred eighteen dollars, or nineteen dollars, unless somebody else has a different way they'd like to, to move forward with that, that's just my opinion, it's up to the council.
And that one does come with the marine radio, all those lights on there, um, what we need to tow, because we tow in the river as well, so, whatever, they said, once we get it, it's ready to put in the water and go.
How many people you have on the water rescue?
Um.
We need a different crew? Ten, so you, Mark?
I don't know, Mark's not, no, and I do not, I prefer not to go out with them.
Maybe, that's kind of a trailer, it took us on a trailer, right?
Yeah, the trailer, the trailer's included in this package as well, yeah.
She remains on the land.
I remain on the land.
Okay. All right, guys, what do y'all think about advertising that out of the equipment line in the EMA budget?
Did you request the one fifty?
No, she requested, she hasn't paid her a question.
Standard equipment to one seventy-five.
That was a horsepower. There's a horsepower.
That's, oh, um, one fifty is what.
You requested that?
Yeah.
Say this is the standard.
Um, we went down, because if you go above one fifty, that changes some, um, guidelines on stuff, so.
Really?
It's just details, anyway, so.
Yeah.
General equipment.
And we don't need anything, we're not, you know, high-speed chase.
No, one, I just wanted five.
Yeah, I just wanted the one fifty, because it took us to different level of stuff, and I think for insurance as well, so.
That seems like a lot of horsepower.
It is for a cycle.
Twenty-one.
Rivers up a lot of times where out there goes. All right, got counsel, what's everybody's wishes? I'll take a motion to advertise seventy thousand for the boat out of general. Okay, we're going to do it out of the EMA budget, um, under equipment line, and I can, I just gave Melissa the number. All right, I've got a motion to, uh, advertise seventy thousand out of the EMA budget under the equipment line, uh, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Susan Harris seconds, any further discussion here, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll get her advertised.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. It's, uh, it's, it's all in here, uh, it's got their cash, there's signatures, uh, everything in here, um, so they just need a motion for us to approve this to, uh, so that, for their records.
Can, surely also use the signature?
Yep, okay, all right, so, uh, it's in here, guys, um.
I was intending to, they too would be.
So, I just, I, I just need someone to make a, uh, motion to approve their, uh, annual, um, report, financial report for the twenty twenty-four year.
I'll make that one here.
All right, Steve Hall, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Susan seconds, any further discuss, discussion or questions? Looks, looks good to me, looks, uh, straight and forward, everything's in good order, so. All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you want me to sign that right now, she can go? Any opposed? All right, you want me to sign that right now? She can go. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I got that down. Michaela's here. I think her thing, she just needs us to approve her annual report too, right?
So mine's actually approval for a grant that I need to apply for for next year. Um, the grant application is due here in April, so I just need approval to go ahead and apply for that. There's no cost to the county with it. What we don't use at the end of the year just goes back to them.
Clean water in the, what?
No.
It's a clean water in the?
No, it's the family report.
Family recovery report, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Dave, Ron makes a motion. I have a second. I'll say, Justin seconds. Any other discussion or questions for Michaela? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
All right, uh, next up here, we've, I think Melissa's got the paper here, but we got to, uh, pro, or appoint.
That was actually Andrew's to talk about.
All right, Andrew, appointment for Kelly Krugman bro.
Yeah, I don't think we formally did that beginning of the year. So it's an open appointment. Josh Claydon, who I think represents their board, says an email and say, hey, we don't have an official appointment for her. So we just need to go back and make sure we cross a T there that we formally appointed her to that board.
All right, guys, I just want, we'll just make a motion here to appoint Kelly Krugman bro to the Lutz, Lutz Township Regional Sewer District.
I make a motion here?
Do, I have a second.
I'll second.
Brian's second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, yeah, Josh, you know this stuff, so we'll, I'll get, I'll get to it. All right, guys, legal report, Andrew, anything? Okay. Oh, business, anything here, guys? All right, I'm in. All right, new business, I've got two things. The first thing here is we need to make a motion to advertise some money for the judge. They've, they've got, they're gonna have a couple jury trials here, and they've already used the money they've got, appropriate here for the lodging and meals for the jurors. So he's asking for additional, us advertise for additional, for seven thousand dollars, because I guess he thinks he's got two to three jury trials here for the rest of the year. So I need a motion from the board to approve the, a request and a number from the judge to be able to feed the jurors and lodging thingy too.
And the reason we didn't give him all this money in the last, before we were budgeting, so we didn't know we were gonna have trials.
Right. Might not have a single jury trial, might have ten.
Right, and we told him to come ask for money when you're not out. So I'll make a motion and we approved the seven thousand.
I, and I know that they just had one that ended in a missed trial and they have another one for the thirty-first. So they went two this month already, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you for this feedback. I appreciate that. All right, Dave, Ron made a motion to, to approve the seven thousand dollars, to advertise seven thousand dollars. Juror Mills, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Justin seconds. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll get that advertised then. All right, next up, Leila's here to ask us about advertising for a big, or for some stories in transportation. Cause we didn't know when we were gonna get the ambulance, so she's got to, to use rely on the local funeral directors to help her out to get that.
Yeah, so it was brought to my attention by the auditor's office that I had turned into a transport bill. And they said, hey, you don't have the money in your transportation budget for these bills. And I was like, oh, okay. So when we came originally during budget time and said, hey, you potentially might get this ambulance, the second quarter of twenty-five, we kind of took for face value that we would get it the second quarter of twenty-five. It's taking a little bit longer for us to get it. It's predicted that we might get it in October. And so since then, we haven't been able to do our own transportations. We've had to rely on the local funeral facility. So I have two bills, so that's totaling a hundred and sixty times two, so that's three hundred and twenty dollars for those. And then one of the funeral directors said, hey, Leila, you haven't paid us from last year in February for two bills. Both are two fifty apiece, that's five hundred dollars. And I said, well, I never did receive the bill. And I didn't. And so they said that they would send me the bill again. That was six weeks ago and they still have not sent the bill, despite me saying, hey, have you sent the bill? Hey, have you sent the bill? Hey, have you sent the bill? And so I guess, Andrew, I wanted to ask you, you know, I even called again today and said, hey, have you sent the bill? Can you at least tell me how much the bills are? Because I'll have to go to the county council again. So what's the statute of limitation on receiving a bill? Because I said, hey, can you please tell me how much they are? And he said, well, they're two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. So there's two, that's equalling five hundred dollars. And I said, well, can you please send them? Because I can't wait another year to pay them. So this is in February of last year, the incident of transportation occurred for that individual, yes. So, and I've sent, and I have proof of sending in March, in April, and May, and June, and July, in November, December, and January, February, and now March.
So does he say why he hasn't sent the bill?
Well, he's. I can't pay the bill.
Dressing.
He claims that he has sent the invoice and that it's outstanding. And so I called his bluff. I just said, you didn't send the bill. I don't, I don't have the bill. I mean, I guess, I guess the dog could have eaten it, but it didn't. So.
If he sends us an invoice, I guess we'll pay him. I mean, that's.
Why even again said today, can you please, but the problem is, is that this individual has now sold the business entity, that that place has come. So my question now is, you know, what kind of paper do we need a ten nine? Can we send the money directly to him? Or does it have to go to the original business entity? And do we need it, does he need a ten ninety-nine? Like, what's the process here?
What's the invoice say?
I don't have an invoice. So, okay.
I get.
And if he does send the invoice, what if he sends it three years from now? You know, how, what's the statute of limitation on receiving an invoice, I guess?
I would just email and tell them, I mean, I don't know, Andrew should say if this is legal or not. I would just email and say, if you don't get the invoice in thirty days, we are not, we're gonna email and say, if you don't send us an invoice in the next thirty days, we are not gonna pay this bill.
I would have, I would have Mr. Claymore send a letter saying, listen, you know, statute of limitations, I think it said it was two years, but just being like, you're gonna, we're not gonna pay this if you don't bring it out, you know, send it over to us. And that might get their attention, but.
Okay. Melissa, do you, do I, can you do that or do I need to call Josh?
I'll get with Leila.
Okay, so we'll have Josh Claymore send a letter.
Okay, so basically I need to ask for, let me add it up, five hundred and twenty or eight, well, let me see, let me go to.
We need to ask for a little bit extra.
I'm gonna.
I was gonna say like.
So I think it's eight hundred and twenty dollars is what I need to pay.
Three thousand. You got all the year, you may not get the ambulance till January, you don't need.
We've been, we've been spending about a thousand dollars a year on this.
So.
So. And that's a back deal, that's.
From last year's.
So I do kind of want to talk to you about that a little bit. So do you guys still want me just to call the entity that's closest to the decedent to do the removal? Because there is a specific funeral home that is less expensive considerably than all of these others. So Bolton House Funeral Home in Rockport is one sixty. Becker Funeral Home, they charge three twenty-five, but Lynn said for me, he'll do it, because he knows I run off a skeleton budget, you know, to be considered of the county, he'll do it for one seventy-five. Rainey's charges three hundred for removal and then Fuller Funeral Home previously did it for two fifty.
They're not charging.
Does it matter?
The only difference it matters is the bill. I mean, they're all.
And how long it takes them to get there?
And how long it takes them to get there. Some are like Johnny on the spot, we're getting there within, you know, the next thirty minutes to forty minutes. And some will be like, I gotta go get my kids, you know, an hour and a half, two hours, sometimes three hours, we're waiting on scene. So we try to be extraordinarily proactive as, as coroners.
Is that mostly a commissioner thing? Determine a policy of.
Policy, I would be a commissioner.
Okay, okay, that's fine. We'll just.
When Robert Fuller's in here, he had something, if it was north of some highway, he called one person, if it was south of another. But I don't know that.
Okay.
I'd say start a list of, this is first one, if they're busy or can't make it, call the next one.
Kind of like.
Yeah. So what we do is, what I advise my deputies to do is just call the funeral facility that is closest to your decedent. So if it's in Chrisley, you're calling Youngblood Chapel. If it's in the north end of the county, you're calling, I try to keep it in the county, so we'll call Rainey's, you know. Or if it's down here, we'll call Bolton House. We try not to play any favoritism, especially since my husband and I own two of the three in the county. So we try to be fair. So I can hit the county council on that at a later date.
Okay. All right, guys, I have, the fund for this would be one thousand, three, one, two, four, zero, transportation storage. We did not budget anything on this because we thought we were gonna have this huge ambulance to help Leila, and we will at the later in the year. So we need to budget some kind of number. Dave made a suggestion, I think, of three thousand dollars. I'm up for whatever the rest of y'all are gonna do, but we'll need someone to make a motion to advertise a cent dollar amount out of the, that, the thirty-one, two, four.
Okay, I was gonna say, that was very generous.
She's already, you're just spent a thousand, we're two months in though, basically, or?
Well, last year's bills are still gonna pay.
All right, so.
Well. Unvenonably.
And we can't get spent on anything other than that, right?
Correct, yes, it cannot. I mean, it can be transferred within the line item, but I wouldn't.
We can transfer to all autopsy expenses, which will be overrun.
Right, right. Which I haven't, I haven't had to ask. Usually I haven't asked by now, so we're still at the ten thousand dollar range on that.
All right, guys, does someone want to make a motion for a set amount to advertise for, for Leila for this so we get our bills paid? Is that a lot of it?
Yeah.
Aye, three thousand.
All right, Dave makes, Dave makes a motion, we advertise three thousand out of thirty-one, two, forty for transportation storage.
Out of general.
Out of the general fund, yeah, a thousand. Uh, Justin Gross, seconds. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, the other thing, I, I don't have knowledge of this on our department. If it was previously put into place, I don't know about it and need to know about it. I recently sent three deputies to medical legal death investigation, the forty-hour training in Indianapolis. Those deputies came back and said, hey, do we get paid hourly while we're here? And I was like, well, that's a good question. We never have in the past. Well, I'm like, why are you asking? Which is a good question, but I want to know what evoked his thought process here, what evoked her thought process here. Well, they were all standing outside during a smoke break and were like, yeah, I'm getting paid eight hundred and seventy-five while I'm here, you know, for the eight hours while I'm in training. And I'm like, what can? So I called Lisa Barker at the state, she's the executive director of training at the Indiana Corpses Association, and said, hey, are we supposed to be paying our deputies while they're in the medical, in the medical legal death investigation training up there? And the answer is yes. If it has been put into place, I don't know about it, and I've not ever paid my deputies while they're in the training. What we've always done, or what I had always been taught to do is to meal reimbursement and mileage reimbursement. I think the reason maybe that it has not ever been thought about is because we make kind of like a stipend, you know, we make a twelve-hour shift or a twenty-four-hour shift, which is forty or eighty. Well, does that mean that we break that twenty-four hour down and pay, you know, three thirty-three an hour? I don't know that that would be appropriate, but I need to ask you guys because you ultimately would, you know, give the money for that. Can we decide on something together? Do you agree that they would need to be paid for the eight hours a day that they're in the training?
How many deputies do you have?
Well, I have, there's nine of us. Well, there's ten altogether, so me included, so nine currently.
Why did just three go? I mean, is it?
Pardon me?
Why did just three go?
Okay, so those were new hires. Those were new hires. So they were not currently certified medical legal death investigators. Yes, all of them are certified.
Go one time.
They do just go one time. However, they are required to do sixteen hours in a two-year period. So they're eight hours a year. And so there is a free training in June that they would be sent for. And we try to.
Where's the training at?
It's in Indianapolis. That's the closest.
So we're paying them a hotel room, we're getting a hotel?
Nope, nope. The state pays for the hotel room. Yep, we pay mileage reimbursement and we then, if we do send them, I rotate the deputies. So I send half one year if they need it. And then I send half a second year if they need it, because a lot of them are EMTs, paramedics, so they can get their hours other places.
So this is considered continuing it, it's like CEUs for them?
Yes, that's correct.
The mandatory.
Yes, it is.
So I have to do all these myself? I'm gonna do a class and I have to pay out of my own pocket to do CEUs for my profession and everything? Like, I don't know, does Ohio Township pay you to go to training and stuff for EMTs?
Two completely different things. So they don't, because Ohio Township doesn't get paid. We're volunteer. So that's a great question. I appreciate you bringing that up. For CEUs, because it is offered by the state and it is free training from the state? It's, it's just a question. I mean, medical, okay, so let me back up. So medical legal death investigators have to be certified by the state of Indiana. The CEUs, that's a great question. Maybe we don't need to consider that. But as of, to go down for the original training so that you can come onto the department and be qualified to do your job, yeah, you should probably get paid. Like, when you go down as a commissioner to Indianapolis, do you get paid a rate to be there? I think all of the, well, that might not be the best example, but a lot of, okay, auditor's office, do you guys, when you guys go to trainings, do your deputies, I think we discussed that they do get paid. Melissa's deputies do get paid.
We pay them an hour.
Right, so do we pay them minimum wage?
We pay a weekly salary.
Okay, so do we pay them minimum wage per hour for the hours that they're there according to the roster? Or do we not? And I just give them, you know, forty dollars a day or eighty dollars a day? I mean, I want to be fair, but you know, like, typically Canoe County, they make eighteen seventy-five. You know, but they have a county of two hundred thousand people. Do you know what I mean? That wouldn't be logical for us, and we have twenty thousand or less.
It's just a one-day training?
It is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Well, the training starts on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, one week, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the second week. And that's mandatory in order to become certified medical legal death investigator. Yeah.
So we're talking ten days or?
So eight days total, probably, yeah. Cause it's two consecutive weekends in a row. Just, this is just a topic of discussion. You know, is this something that we had on and go ahead and implement for the remainder of this year? Cause I'll probably send deputies in September. There's only training twice a year, February and September.
How come we never heard of this in the last twenty years? I've never heard of this before.
They, I think they did do it when Robert was, because I did get paid for that, paid for going. And I didn't, I don't remember what it was. But is this just something that has fallen by the wayside every single, you know, every time somebody has come into office? And something that Rachel didn't think to tell me? So it's just a question. And like I said, if the, if the executive director of training is saying, yes, your people should be getting trained or paid during their training, I think that's, you know, important to do. It's not something that we have to, you know, but I think.
I guess it'd really be the admissions decision, how they pay the people, they weren't figure out, I don't know.
I know, I was wondering, they, they've changed the personnel policy or they, they've been through it. I wonder if there's something in the personnel policy that talks about, if it addresses training in general.
Good observation.
So I can't remember. I'll check with the.
They have to.
Like, what if we send the sheriff deputy something like on their off day? Do we pay them normally or not or?
No, it depends what the training is, but sometimes I don't, but if there's, if there's salary employees, you know, I guess the question is, you set a salary rate for a coroner, and they use it for training, then won't that fly when they go to scenes? You know, I mean, it's, it's that employee thing. You can't pay them this amount and then pay them that amount.
Right, you gotta pay them the same.
So you gotta pay them the same. And I, I do agree with that. That's why I said, do we pay them, you know, forty dollars or do we pay them eighty dollars? Like that, like a training category, three days? Do you know how you added the category for the autopsies and the category for the case investigations? And if they go out, they get the forty-dollar kind of the stipend. So we do want to stay consistent, but it is not something that has ever been brought to my attention before, and it, so I think it would only be fair to do that. Now, in regard to CEUs, I can definitely see what you're saying. We are in charge of our own, for sure.
Well, let's think on that for a little bit.
But now, but also in the same breath, like if I go do my CEUs at the firehouse, even though it's a volunteer position, I am allowed to write down my hours that I am there for payment. But we only get paid quarterly and we get paid as stipends.
So that work we have to do is both have to do CEUs for the fire department, also do CEUs for.
So that work we have to do, so we'll have to do CEUs for the fire department, and I'll do CEUs for my career, like, I have to go on training next week, and I spend twenty-five hundred dollars, my company doesn't reimburse me, I have to pay it to keep my license in order to do the job that I'm entitled to, so that's a way to viewpoint, yes, training's needed, but that's the training that they need to function as a coroner assistant or coroner deputy.
No different with oncology, you have to agree after the job, but on the same note, if my current employer said, hey, we're sending you to training for a week, I expect to be paid for that week, so I can see both, both.
I can't.
Well, they have to be paid to be a certified.
To what, to what the county policy is.
Let's look at the county policy.
Because you don't have anybody going until September, right?
That is correct, I don't have anybody scheduled to go.
Because I, yeah, I don't see this as, as being like salary ordinance, which would be you guys specifically, because there's nothing in there that I've seen that says, this would be, to me, seem like a county policy concerning are you salaried, maybe you don't get compensated directly, or if you're hourly, you do get it at a per, I don't know, so I'd have to, I think that would be more of a commissioner's question, but I.
Assuming you sent somebody last year to, or it's just the first year?
So, I said, have sent, I did send, everybody on my department is trained, so, I did send three last, I might have sent five last year, because I sent some in February, and then I sent some in September, yeah.
Yeah, let us just figure out that book says here, and we'll, Andrew, we'll work on it, we'll just see what we have.
Okay, okay, is this something that you do want me to go and talk to the commissioners about?
Uh, let's just see what Andrew comes up with first, and I'll let you know.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you for.
Forgot who's, what's responsible, who's responsible first.
Right, right.
We'll get it figured out.
Like I said, I wouldn't have brought it to the table if it wasn't brought to all of the corners, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, Leila, alright guys, that's all I have for, uh, new business, anybody else have any new business?
Uh, I got one thing, Mayor.
Yes, Steve.
In the next couple of weeks, we're gonna start to head that house, we have all the funding working out, and, uh, we're gonna have a round ready, and all of you are invited, and I'll let you know what that is, we don't have a date, we invited the commissioners and the, for your support, for doing that. Right now, there's actually six new houses being planned for, probably all of them this year.
Perfect.
And streets and stuff, we're gonna get paid, and my progress will be.
Going on.
Good, good deal.
My progress will be.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Alright, guys.
I'll let you know when that date is.
Okay, alright, appreciate that, thank you, anybody else got anything? Sherry.
Just a heads up, our, uh, the generator in the jail is thirty-three years old, so, what we're looking at is getting the information as to what it would cost to keep it going, and if parts aren't out, you know, they can't be made anymore, um, so, and then if they do do a repair, how long it would last compared to apparently new generators, just somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and sixty.
So that's a generator was built in there, put in there when we built the building, which is that many years ago.
Right, now, it is low on hours, so if they can find a replacement.
Is it not working?
No, it's, it's, it's leaking through the radiator, so it's, it's looking along.
Okay.
While we're giving these prices, but just to give you a heads up, that, once I get everything together, I'll be bringing it back for you all, you know, for your consideration, and of course, the commissioners, but just wanted to give you a heads up that that may be something coming early.
Okay.
And you're on.
Brought in rotation, the highway department has a generator too, it's pretty much shot, about the same age.
Yeah, we're, I'm gonna build that building, yeah, on when that was.
Okay.
So if I'll, I'll make a request, we'll, we'll.
Maybe we can get a package deal, like our copiers.
Yeah, two for one.
I was the one in the courthouse, we didn't want her to.
Oh, man, alright guys, we better stay focused here, alright, anything else, anybody else needs to bring up tonight? Alright, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Dave Frum makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Grohl seconds, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, alright, turn off our camera there, boys.